Talk to the judge.
Bring for you there, and then you can come sit over on these chairs.
And then, um, now you can't do that. Like, you can't get back there.
Oh.
At all, and you can't, there's no bezzer, there's nothing. You have to make an appointment or call them and see if they'll come open the door for you or.
I mean, that access is pretty rare. Is right, I mean, is it kind of a small town thing?
No, mostly, like, if federal court, you can't, but, but for most of the state courts. Your judges are relatively accessible.
I know, but sign in, now you sign in.
Yeah, there were two.
I got, I got one, so.
I bet they're on the course.
All right, Andy, we're ready.
Great Indian giver. Well, I needed him. This meeting will now come to order, we'll have the roll call. Roxy?
Here.
Reagan?
Here.
Me?
Here.
Here?
Yes.
George?
Here.
And Gloria? Looks down for the pledge. Alright, there we go.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, come on, it's Reagan.
Okay, I was like, looking at the puzzle.
I'd like to remind everyone that, uh, this meeting is audio recorded. And at this time, is there any public comment for items not on the agenda? For you?
No.
Okay. We'll read the consent agenda, approval of the following, A, city plans to be paid, B, three-fourth rodeo arena board kind of be paid. C, city council minutes of one fourteen, one twenty-five. Increase of price to original contract with Harman Construction for the city. City Hall, remodeled by four thousand six hundred and forty, uh, thirty dollars and thirty-three cents due to several unknowns. In, at the original contract. E. Amendment number six, task order number nine, with Great West Engineering to include an additional twenty thousand dollars for preliminary and final design of wellhouse to see. F, journal vouchers. Ri- uh, revenue vouchers for eleven twenty-four through one twenty, uh, five, and cash report. D. Two-year ACH agreement with Manhattan State Bank, H amendment number, number two. Uh. To the service contract with Great West Engineering for an additional two years through six thirty of twenty twenty-seven. I, draw number twenty-six, float. Water project totaling twenty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents from all ARPA mini, minimum of allocation grant for MAG funding. Council, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Gene?
Uh, yes, can I get an explanation on what the unknowns were in that?
Which one? On the re- on the city hall?
Yeah.
So because they went in there and, I mean, they did the bid with all of, with every, you know, while we were still in there. Then once they got in there, they said it would be easier to remove. Um, like this existing ceiling, we weren't going to remove that in the front room, they were just gonna put something over it, but the electrician and then can will have a lot easier access to the attic of what they have to do up in the attic if they remove that, and then all that dust and everything that's in there anyways. As well as an additional, what else? They, they bathroom, we have to have two bathrooms, because we're enlarging the space, so we have an additional wall and more of that stuff as well, so. Some changes because of code.
Alright. Cool, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Gene, are there any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I guess.
This can move the second it. Okay, Gloria, do you have any question on this?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have the vote then. Roxy?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
And George? Okay, on public hearing, it's public hearing and decision on a resolution to adopt the impact fee advisory committee's recommendations for for updated impact fees for new construction and changes of use. I underlined in my, uh, section seven updated, because we are still updating. This, we will not be reading the resolution tonight, and Susan will tell us.
I'm gonna walk you through this, and you do have a decision to make, but, um. I want you first to understand the, the process, as I understand it statutorily with regard to updating and adopting new impact fees. You're updating some of the existing ones, and then you're adopting new ones, which is, you appointed the impact fee advisory committee, the IFAC. And then they review and monitor the process for calculating and assessing and spending impact fees. And then they came back with recommendations, calculating for, and for, for calculating and assessing impact fees for water, wastewater, fire protection, transportation, and municipal buildings. That came to the council in the form of a draft report that stated December twenty twenty twenty-four. You got that last time, and the last time I was here, we didn't have the service area boundaries attached to it. So I asked you to wait until we had the service area boundaries, which we now have. In the meantime, we met and were talking about the specific portion of the, the, um, recommendation with regard to water and wastewater as it applies to your large-scale development. Large-scale development, the, the, um, committee had said, um, it should be on a case-by-case basis. And I was unaware of that till I read the vote, read that report, and then when we met la- about two weeks ago, I said, I, that's not gonna pass muster in Montana. I mean, I get that it's a difficult thing to do, right? Because large-scale development could be a very big warehouse with a very small office. And so you don't necessarily wanna do it on square footage. Um, we currently do it on meters, and so we asked Lee to go back and look at that and say, we gotta, uh, you know, and you could do it on line size, but line size leads speeds into a meter, and, I mean, there's maybe other ways, I'm just not aware of them. So Lee, on Sunday, sent out, uh, the schedule of for what it would look like, based for, for all, all those commercial developments and base for large scale on meter size. Well, I'm a lawyer, right, like, so I, process is my deal, I don't care what you do, as long as I can explain it to a judge and you follow the process to get where you made the decision, right? I will always be pushing you to describe why you're making your decision. But how, what you just arrive at isn't, as long as you can explain why you're doing it, I'm gonna be able to tell a judge why you're doing it, and we're gonna survive a judicial challenge. So that then brought us to where we were in the last couple of days, which is that you, so you get this report. Eventually, you're gonna adopt the report on, on the impact fees on their recommendations. And then you're gonna, uh, or you can modify it, you can accept their report, and then you can decide, well, they recommend full impact fees on municipal buildings, and we think it should be less than that. I mean, you get that discretion, but that discretion comes after you get their full report with their recommendations. And then you enact impact fees, right, we do that by ordinance. And we're already in the process of working on the ordinance. So the issue that pro- a process that came up in the last couple of days is you have an impact fee report of December twenty twenty-four. You, um. You can accept this report, but the report does include this question about, um, transportation, which we're gonna get to in a minute. And it has this recommendation in it that says you can do large-scale development on case-by-case. Um, and, and I use the, the, Crystal pointed this out to me. I use the acronym LSD for large-scale development, it means the large buildings, not some prohibited thirds, you know, narcotic. Um, and then, so. My, we, so we'll need for this large-scale development, because they were unaware of my legal opinion with regard to case-by-case. We need a recommendation from the impact fee advisory committee, and then you can accept the report, um, I need, and, or you, and, or you can modify it. And then the council can adopt a revised resolution, so you're kind of at this turning point, right, and then you'll go on and impose impact fees. But you're at this turning point right now, which is you have their report, their report says case-by-case basis. So we could go ahead and adopt the resolution tonight. But then it's still gotta go back, in my opinion, to the impact fee advisory committee, to have them weigh in on a, the, the, a different standard of how you would measure this. The other way, I mean, so the other way you could do it is we can hold their report right now. Ask them to reconvene to look at this water and wastewater with regards to large-scale development. Get their recommendation, do a modified report that includes that recommendation, and then, of course, you get to decide whether you're gonna do them at full, or you're gonna follow their recommendations or not. And then we adopt them in the impact fees. So my advice is, let's do this once and let's do, I mean, I know you've got now a full month of delay because of me being picky. Um, and I think that's what you pay me to be, but it is a personality trait as well. Um, but, but I think that's where we need to go, and then my thought was, since we're, I think you need to go back to your advisory committee and say, we need you to look at this large-scale development, water and sewer, water and waste, I, I can't call it sewer anymore. Wastewater, um, impact fee, I think we should tell them about the conversation you guys had with regard to transportation, which was you talked about transportation and you kind of, and they, their concern was the transportation fee looks high, and they didn't wanna recommend that high fee. What I got from your meeting two weeks ago was, you agree it looks high, but the high fee is reasonable and fair. And so with that information about how you guys generally see that fee, I would, if we're back there anyway, I would ask them, well, do you have do you have a recommendation now, or do you not? I mean, because they certainly have the right to say, it's, we think it's high and it's on you guys to decide, that's absolutely fine, but now that they know how you feel about it, maybe they would have a different opinion, I don't know. I mean, it's, we can ask them, they don't have to change their opinion. So it's really what we're here tonight for, is we're here to say, do you guys wanna, do you wanna go forward and adopt the recommendations as they are? We still would need to modify the resolution, so it couldn't be needs tonight, but, um, or do you wanna go back to the impact fee committee and have them address water and sewer impact fees on large-scale development? That's really the process question that's before the council.
Uh, in my opinion, I think we should go back to the impact fee committee. I think that if we spent all this time doing it in there, what's a couple more months? I mean, really, then, a couple of months might seem like a long time, but, you know, court cases can go on for years. Uh, so why not try to make it as bulletproof as possible and something that we're happy with, or at least can defend, you know?
So is that the issue that if somebody sued or something, there, we don't have?
Well, what you have is, you'll have a report that says, for water and impact fee, water and sewer impact fees for large-scale development, it'd be on a case-by-case basis. Now, I think we're gonna have to go back, and I think that Mr. Nellis agrees with me, we're gonna have to go back to the advisory committee to talk about this before you adopt an ordinance anyway. So it's really a process question of, uh, do we do it now and get you one full report? Um, that has a twenty-twenty-five date on it, or do we adopt as is, and then go back, and then we would still have an amendment before you can get to the adoption of your ordinance? And, I, you know, I mean, I think like a lawyer, right, like, I'm gonna be in court, I would much rather explain to the judge that we slowed down. We did it once, it got sent back to the advisory committee a couple of times, or one, one time, honestly. Um, to ask them these specific questions, they do it, we get a revised report, and then that's what comes back to you, that would be my pres- preference. Cause I think it's easier for a judge to understand that process, right, we followed the process. They gave recommendations, and, and then we adopt, um, impact fees by ordinance after that.
So if, if, uh, somebody was gonna build a big building and all that, um, and they weren't happy with the impact fees, is there a process where they can appeal, or?
Yeah, that's all in there.
Okay.
It'll be in the, it'll be in the ordinance, yes.
I think that's a better idea, go back and give it to them back, and before we go forward, yeah. Myself.
Yes, um, does that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I don't, you know, I've been watching the legislature years, you know, the, Mr. Mayor, councilman.
With this also, like, having a clear, defined, uh, set of rules. If a large-scale development was to come in, we made a ruling, case by case. The next company that comes in might be a couple of years from now, there might be different makeup on the council. And now there's, there's a difference in our ruling that could happen, and then that would open us up to you know, you're, you're changing the rules on us.
Right, and that's essentially, that's, that was my concern when I saw it, which is that essentially, case by case is the legal definition of arbitrary and capricious, because there's no standard upon which to judge it.
Yeah.
So, and the, and your committee did work on this, it's not like they didn't talk about it, it's just really difficult when you get to large scale. Because you, like I said, you can have a big warehouse, that, I mean, you can, you can have the Amazon warehouse that has, you know, has three business offices and probably an extra bathroom for people to use it when they're loading and unloading, but you don't, you don't have it, that's very different than having a big retail building. Or a big building that's offices upstairs and retail on the main floor that they all have their own bathrooms, it's just, it's a different function, and and that's why we, that's why we need a criteria, we can't just say, well, today we feel like it should be this, and in five years, when the next one comes by, well, you have two more bathrooms, so it's three times as much. And, uh, and you're putting everybody in the position of having to say, well, we don't know what things are, and as soon as you have to say that, we're gonna lose. Yes, absolutely.
Um, so to, for us to move forward tonight, do we need to, like, make a motion to kick this to the impact fee committee, or is it just all kind of like?
You.
I'm, I'm on board with kicking it down the road.
You need, you need to make a decision about whether you wanna consider the resolution that's proposed with the December twenty twenty-four draft report, or you want it to go back to the impact fee committee.
Okay. Uh, I would like to make a motion to recommend to review, send a, see the impact fees to, to address the large-scale development assessment.
Do you want them to talk about the transportation, or not?
Yes.
Sorry.
I'll take that motion with the amended part with transportation.
It has been moved and seconded. Sir, uh, any more discussion on this, no? Do we have any discussion from our, okay, then we will have the vote. Uh, we, uh, Roxy?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
And George?
Thank you.
I, I have a just quick question.
Absolutely.
We need to define what, what needs to happen, and we need to define what a large-scale development is in terms of square feet, or offices, or bathrooms, or what?
We need to define how we're going to charge impact fees to, to, I think there's a, there is a description of large-scale development in there. We just now need to know how we're gonna charge them, and, and what Lee proposed, um, was, uh, by meter, right? Cause you have a different meter on a one-inch line than you have on a two-inch line, and, and so um, you know, and you could have a large-scale business, you could have a large-scale building that maybe has two meters, cause they got offices on both sides, and those kind of things, and that allows us to, to be able to look at what's being proposed, and then look at the sewer impact fee for the, that type of building.
Thank you, Gene.
Yes, um.
I don't know if this is the right time, I, I might need to go and talk to the impact fee, but, um, and this is just because of what I do when I'm not here, um, so every building has an estimated fixture load count for individual faucets, urinals, if it's a commercial use, you can get a rough load for each unit, and you can calculate that, and should calculate that for every building that's being built. So like, a house that gets a three-quarter inch supply line, it's the same as a business that gets a three-quarter inch supply line. But depending on their fixture load, there's drastically different water use.
Mm-hmm.
So like, just using the meter is, is a really blunt instrument, and the fixture load for each building, it would be different, you know, I mean, even if it's a commercial building and you get a one-inch line to it, they only have one bathroom, their fixture load would be like six versus a house, which is like thirty-six.
So, and is this like a building code?
Yeah, it's in the.
IBC?
And it's a real easy chart to, to look through.
And you have access to it, so I don't have to spend the five hundred dollars to buy it?
Got it in my truck. Yeah.
Susan, do you want me to jump in there with that?
I should.
I, it's up to the, I mean, I don't.
We've discussed it, and we made, we've, uh, made a motion, and it's been passed, Lee.
Okay, I was just gonna explain why we didn't use the plumbing code table, but.
That what you were talking about, Eric?
Yeah, yeah. It's, well, it, um, we can put you on the, the impact fee committee, if that's what you prefer, we need to have them discuss it, right?
Um, it sounds like that Lee had considered that already, I just didn't know if that had been brought up and thought about.
Okay.
Um, and if it is not a good solution, like, I just would shoot in, shooting in the dark over here.
No, I appreciate it, cause I hadn't heard about it, so.
So, we'll get that to the impact fee.
Yeah, sounds like you know about it, too.
So Su- uh, Susan will be meeting with the impact fee committee, and I plan on going to. And, uh, we'll get this, right, get this all lined up.
Yep.
Okay. All right, uh, our next item is reported officers. Do you have any?
Um, the chamber has given you guys, um, and then the royal board to the invitation dinner and meeting, which is going to be on March twenty-ninth, um, from five to ten PM, where is it, Roxy?
It is at Headwaters Livestock.
Thank you, I see that now, and it's fifty dollars a person, or you can get a table, VIP table for five hundred dollars. And just let me know who, in the opinion of you want to attend. That's all I have tonight.
Kelly?
Um, we have been going back and forth with Pierce Flooring, and we finally got their final quote and everything done with them, but to order the carpet and tile, they need us to pay, um, eighty-six hundred dollars, and we got that today, that amount, so we just don't have it on the claims approval. So I just wanted to let you know, we're gonna pay it tomorrow with the claims, and you'll approve it after the fact, if everyone's okay with that, cause he said they're starting to see back orders. And if he doesn't get it ordered, he's afraid we'd have to be waiting for that. And then we did get a quote from Harmon's about using the tin as a chair rail around the tin from the ceiling, the old tin. Um, as a chair wa- rail around both walls. Um, if she sent it, it would be framed out with wood around it, and then that, it add about four thousand dollars onto the bid. But I really think we should do it, because that's history, and we have a cushion in our proposal, our plumbing is gonna go down because he had a line to a refrigerator for us to have ice in our refrigerator, which we aren't even gonna have that, we have a little little refrigerator that doesn't make ice, um, and a sink out there, and all that's going away, we're using the same toilet we had, so there's a lot of stuff in the plumbing that's gonna go down. And I think it would add a lot of character to city hall using that old tin, cause it's really pretty.
It never got painted over, it's still the natural.
The old tin.
Years ago, we had a hell of a fight over that. Well, we got some remodel.
Must've won, cause it's beautiful, I got, I got a picture when they were up there cleaning out the attic, so.
Yeah.
One of the council persons wanted to buy it, and we said, no, it's not for sale, well, it wasn't a fight, but he was pretty unhappy that we and, I mean, he was, he was buying it to resell it, and we didn't want that to happen, so. And I have another question for Kelly, uh, you're okay after Sunday?
We'll also have game. We'll also have one more, um, contract for city hall, and that's the, because their, Harmon is subbing out the, um, drywall work, and so it's easier, it's cheaper for us to pay for that directly than to have them add it into their bid, so, cause I'll mark it up, and so we'll have another one for absolute drywall as well on the next council agenda.
And, uh, speaking of the drywall, there were two sheets that were still hanging down there in some of the back, and the drywaller said that he would like those taken down because it's easier to put up new, and try and.
He told me that they're gonna do some, he's gonna change the amount, so the whole, the whole contract will be closer to six thousand dollars for all the drywall in the building.
Which we're still under budget.
Yeah, we're still under budget.
Do we need a motion to accept what Kelly has?
It, it'll be on a, it'll be the future, but if anybody has a problem with it, we can tell them no, but
Okay.
I got the bid a little while ago before I came up here, and it's, it's pricey, but I think it would really add a lot to city hall.
Really, it'll really make it look nice in that chamber.
Yeah.
Yeah, I love that idea, I do too.
Okay. I don't have anything else, that was all I got.
Susan, do you have anything else to say?
No, thank you.
That's reported officer, uh, reports from council, maybe, so Benny?
You wanna do that, Gene?
Yeah, okay, uh, the sewer and water committee met the other day, uh, here at the library, uh, to discuss the, uh, uh, galvanized lines and the lead copper, uh, hookups, and we, uh, basically were trying to uh, I guess, get our arms around what we were up against, and who was gonna pay what, and, uh, where is this money coming from, I mean, and so, uh, basically, when we got through, is that Kelly enlightened us to the fact that, uh, actually, the program starts this year, and we have ten years.
It starts in twenty twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight, oh, I thought it was twenty-five. So we have ten years from there to get this done, and, uh, the committee would like to make a recommendation to the council, and we can talk, visit with this later, but that we want to go with what the ordinance says about who is responsible for what. In other words, if our ordinance says the land or the homeowner is responsible from the main to the meter, uh, we want that ordinance to be, uh, observed. At this time, don't feel like we should make any exceptions, uh, to what people have to pay. Uh, we, some of the things we talked about, one, looping process, where we're going to replace a bunch of the main lines with that loop that, uh, the engineer's been talking about, at that time, we think that we should make it a way to the property owners if they are on, uh, lead service, galvanized service, uh, maybe possibility that the contractor could make them a better deal on the situation, and so, uh, I think, basically, and then Kelly has since, uh, provided us, um, I'm assuming all of this, I got it, the maps of where the, the, uh, the hookups are, or the service lines that have this problem, and there's quite a bit on that loop I was looking at, and so, uh, but the next question is, is that, uh, where does the money come from? And, you know, like I say, we talked about the water end of it, and Kelly gave us the finances on the water department to where uh, you know, how much money we had in the water department, but when you start doing something to, uh, help people out or do it this, it, the, the water fund would not last that long. And so then we would be looking at, do we raise, raise water rates, so we can pay for service lines for some people, whatever, and we didn't think that was a very good idea at all, and so, so with this meeting, with getting a lot of our questions answered, I think, and is that we kind of came away with, we will proceed as we can, but it's gonna be a cost that's gonna be on to the property owner. That's just our, and I guess that the committee.
There was, uh, one other thing that we wanted to mention, is that we were hoping, hoping to get some estimates of, of pricing to replace, so that we could inform the homeowners on that loop. This is what it would cost to replace it by yourself, this is what it could potentially cost, uh, to replace it while that loop is being replaced.
Steve is gonna do that, he's gonna give us a price per square foot.
Awesome. And so before we go to the homeowners and let them know that we would love for them to, you know, make this improvement to their property, uh, having some hard numbers of being like, you know, and, and I'm ju- just throwing out ballpark numbers, but like, it's eighteen thousand by yourself, or it might be, you know, fifteen or thirteen, if you include it in this larger project, so. Yeah, well, sorry. Yeah, that was, it was a good meeting.
So my question is, is it ready? This is gonna be done this year, the looping. So.
We're supposed to go out for bid.
It is out for bid.
It's out for bid. And so this, uh, we should be contacting these people when, as soon as we get the bid. Because the thing, but is, what if they say no? And then.
That's it.
We still have the Galbi in the street, and we repair the street after we do the loops, and then we have to redig it up.
Then they pay for it.
But our project's gonna dig it up from the main to the curb stops, curb stop. So we're replacing that section.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, because that's what we did in the prior, uh, grants.
And we're still gonna do that.
So we're just going to the curb stop, and then, okay, that's all I needed to know.
That's in the bid, and the bid will be open the twenty-sixth. Uh, Thursday is the construction conference, if, if, if anybody has questions, they would come here. Susan Hayes will be here to answer any questions for contractors, but it will be opened on the twenty-sixth.
When is this Thursday, when's she gonna be here? When is this, Thursday, when's she gonna be here?
Yeah.
What time?
Um, three o'clock, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just for if any contractors.
It's just a, it's just a pre-bid conference meeting, yeah.
Now, that's all I needed to know, because I thought, well, if we just tie it to them.
No, Steve said we're doing our part, it's in the bid.
Yeah, which I didn't know when I talked to you guys, so the street would be torn up by us and fixed by us, and then they would just have this.
Awesome, most curb stops are outside of the streets.
They're actually, they're outside the street, they're usually just inside the property line.
A question for Susan on this, I do not remember that when we did at the C B G grant in ninety three, we brought, we put it, we brought it. A new curb stop outside the property, say in Boulevard, and then we tied to the existing. So because there is a legal matter there where we can't go on to their property.
Jessica and Susan Hayes have talked about that already, so that it's outside the property life.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, I, I know they've talked about it.
Be in the Boulevard.
So it would be in the Boulevard or the sidewalk instead, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I guess that's.
Cause there's a lot of these that we did, we have two, two shut offs, this one don't work, the other one wells.
But we, we still need to make sure that if it's in the Boulevard or the sidewalk, that if they're gonna do it themselves, they have to fix that too, right?
Well, that's all the committee has to report. Thank you, Kelly, for taking notes.
Thank you, Kelly, for taking notes.
Are there any other reports? Thanks, thanks for doing that. Okay, for unfinished business, uh floodplain mitigation project, Kelly?
We will be um the twenty sixth, twenty seventh, and twenty eighth in Missoula for the floodplain conference, and we are presenting on Thursday. Um, we're gonna be doing a test run of it here this week, um, next week, sorry, next week, um. And then we have been accepted to the New Orleans conference.
Yay.
Yeah.
When's it?
May twenty first, I think, is the day we present, but it's the May eighteenth, nineteenth, the week of May eighteenth in New Orleans.
Can't call him and change it to Mardi Gras?
No, no. Yeah, I think it's in March.
And you, you're gonna, you two are gonna speak down there.
I don't know that both of us will go, it's kind of expensive.
Yeah.
Oh, you're worth it.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that I can travel.
The um A M F M locally, though, they usually pick one person that comes to the conference to send to the new, to the national conference. So one of us would probably be picked for that, so I don't know what they pay for, but um D N R C has said that normally they pick one person that comes to the conference to go to a national. And since we'd be presenting, they probably cover one of our trips.
So all we would maybe have to is come up with one more for one.
And Headwaters said if they have funding, they would help with that, too.
I think we are both kinda go, if we can.
Yeah, if you're up to it.
Yeah.
You'll be healed by that.
I understand.
Okay, anything else, Kelly?
Nope.
Okay.
Oh, I do have one other thing, they're gonna be boring in the channel um. To test the soils and test the water, to do water levels, and and Budelman's and Leo both have agreed to let him go out there and do boring and. In the possible channel area, so that'll happen by the end of the month.
I'm gonna bring you back to council committees for a second and ask about the. Long way, first, long way.
I, the bid's not closed, the bid's not closed, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, water project update, Susan.
She said she didn't have a.
She doesn't have any update.
And uh Jean gave us good report on that. And Thursday, you said we'd have uh, kinda like the contractors meeting on at about three o'clock?
I, I think it's on three o'clock, it's on our all kind of calendar.
Okay.
Might be on my, my own personal calendar, don't say.
Okay, for uh, section eleven, we have new business. Uh, fiscal year twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four audit report by Rudden Company, and Dane, are you there? There you go.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me just fine?
Yep.
Okay, perfect, great to hear, I hopefully, I I, as I was watching here earlier, it was skipping a little bit, so hopefully. We can draw that to a minimum, and I'll uh keep it short and sweet for you, um, thank you for having me tonight, um. We finished up the audit here a few weeks ago, and and luckily, we're able to get on the schedule here for the. Um, for the meeting tonight, and I appreciate Kelly and Crystal's hard work uh to do so, I know it's, you know, a lot of information that we gather from them, and. Um, as we've, you know, continued to uh build our, you know, relationship year over year, that seems to get smoother and smoother each year as we go. Um, and so I think it's, you know, overall kudos to them, and 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 relatively, as we go through this. Uh, uh, clean audit, you you know, in that regard, and so I don't know if if everyone has had a chance to look at the hundred page document we've sent, I can. I can point to a couple areas within it, and I don't know if it's, um, if we can share the screen or not, or if I can just talk about the pages, I can refer to pages on it. Um, if that works, and then feel free to interrupt me as I go through, uh, but yeah, I'll, I'll fairly high level on this. Uh, the first thing is on page two, we have our audit opinions, and you'll see that that is one of two areas within the financials that include Rudden Company's letterhead. The rest is a product of the cities and and. Um, the management side of that, that those are your financials, you'll see that we have clean, unmodified opinions for all but one area, and that is in regards to. The fire relief liability, um, that's out there for the pension side of things, which. That's consistent with what has gone on for, I think, for the last probably five or six years, um, so no change in that regard, I think the main thing is. Those other areas were clean and um the information that we were received, we were able to verify and go through our procedures in that regard. Uh, yeah, any questions on the opinions or anything like that, I think it's, you know, it's, it's what we've come to expect. Um, and if there was any significant items, this would not be the first that. Uh, you'd be hearing about it from the board perspective, I know I talked to Jean as we went along, and I talked to the mayor as we went along as too, and so. There's any significant items, this, like I said, this wouldn't be uh the the first time we'd be talking about those. The next area that I'll point out is on page six of the document, and this is your management's discussion and analysis. This is your Reader's Digest ver- version, and so if you have a few minutes to read this, instead of, you know, the the hours needed to read the entire thing. I'd probably read through this M P N A section to get a good idea of what went on for the year. And it will give the, you know, the highlights and and those types of things, along with a great section on what's coming up for the city in regards to the. Flood mitigation project and all of those types of things as well. After that, we'll take a big jump to page ninety six, which is the last report. In regards to, from from our company, and that is gonna be uh the report that is required by governmental auditing standards. And within this report, if we had any significant findings or any significant control deficiencies, we'd note them here. The one item that I'll point out is we do have a finding for the Fire Relief Association item, um, just for not having that. Uh, that study done, and and we've talked about that in the past, it's the cost benefit of having that versus just funding the overall uh liability that's there. And that is the only finding that we did have, so just like the opinions consistent with what we've had in the past. And there were no significant journal entries from our point of view, I think we, you know, had a very minimal, if anything. Um, and and so I'd like to say a fairly clean uh any uh, you know, quick, clean audit for us, and um. Kind of what we've come to expect, and we didn't see any significant items uh from our overall review. Any questions for me on that? Great, okay, there'll. There'll be one other letter that will be issued, and this is directly to the board as well, and this is going over, it's a required communication from us that will say. How the audit went, what new items that were in the financial statements, uh, any type of significant items that we would have noted would be in that letter as well. It's like it's been in the past, fairly boilerplate with no significant items uh listed, and so just know that that will be one other publication that will come along with this. Um, document as well.
Thank you very much.
Any other? Questions for me, anything like that, I think, if if not, I think we'll continue to proceed with, I don't know if the, what the, what you'll need to do if the. Council will need to accept this, and then we can move forward with um, or with finalizing or what what we need to see, but um. I'll let you take it over from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
Thanks, Jane. Does council accept this report?
I'll make a motion to accept the uh report from the auditor.
Has been moved in second, and we'll have the. Vote. Roxy?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
You're?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
And I, and I thank you to the ladies in the office, thanks for all the hard work, ladies, and Red. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dane.
Thank you all, have a great rest of your meeting.
Okay, our next item is the decision allowing Jean Towson to apply for the A E R P Community Challenge Grant for the Headwaters Trail System.
So I asked this to be put on at the last council meeting, uh, and so I thought I'd also give you maybe what my plans were if I'm successful, and what I'm gonna put in for this grant. And so I've been talking to Kelly a little bit, and uh, so. When I first started, I, I mean, I've been working on trying to get as many benches along the trail as possible. And the reason for this is that when I started out, uh. Uh, my wife helped me quite a bit with the grants and stuff, and she was quite a promoter of that. Every quarter of a mile, there should be a bench along the trail for um older adults, we don't call ourselves senior citizens anymore. Um, but uh also the area out by the ponds is actually really heavily used by um. Older adults and uh, uh, people that do rehabilitation with knee surgery and hip surgeries and stuff, and so. Uh, so it's nice to have a uh, a bench where people can sit and, and not everybody can do the whole. Uh, marathon like the guy next to me without stopping and breathing, we need a place to sit down, so I'm gonna, was gonna concentrate on some benches. And then I also wanted to add some more picnic tables to the ponds area. Uh, mainly, there's a one cement one out there that's got a broken bench that's, I don't even know why it's still there, I think it's dangerous. But I thought that maybe we should maybe add a picnic table down by the uh, the sand pit where the volleyball stuff is, and where that uh. Uh, dock is, which is very heavily used area, at least one and maybe two, and then maybe replace the bad one, and we'll do this with like uh. Uh, setting them uh on a concrete pad, and then uh. Doing a uh anchor bolt or something on both ends to where they don't learn how to swim the first week they get set out there and stuff. But then Kelly asked me to also think about, you know, in our budget discussions last year, we talked about. Uh, possibly expanding the beach over on the uh east side or northeast side, whatever you wanna call it there. Uh, making it bigger, and so maybe the possibility of adding some picnic tables there, and uh. Maybe even some covered uh gazebo type things to where people, there's uh, they can maybe. Get some kind of shade if they're out there and stuff, and so uh this area is very popular, and so I thought I would uh. Put that in the grant and see what happens, and see, I'll, I'll try to get some cost on some uh gazebo's, uh pergola type things to see what we can do.
Well, we, the summer rec is gonna donate their leftover money to us to do that, and they thought they would put in one pergola on that side with their money too, so there might already be that part of it, but. If you get the money, we'll figure out somehow to work it, we'll work it.
Make it bigger, yeah.
So we'll see how this grant goes, uh, I've been actually pretty fortunate, I think, uh. Three years that I put in for it, I've gotten it two years, so I don't know, I might be pushing my luck a little bit here, but I did attend the seminar, the webinar the other day on it, and uh. Um, so we'll give it our best shot, we'll see what we can do, but I'd like to see some improvements out there, that area. Uh, the last, and I think I've said this a hundred times, the last four or five years has just grown tremendously and huge. And I mean, even, even now, the other day, one Sunday, I went out there, and there must have been. Ten or twelve people ice fishing, and uh, but I mean, we got people doing yoga classes, we got uh. Wind sailors out there, we got the thing, and uh, the other day I went by and they had, I don't know what class it was. I mean, when all the years I went to school, I mean, I never got to go ice fishing in the middle of the week, and so they had kids.
That was my granddaughter's class, Leonard was out there.
Out there, and so it, it gets a lot of use, and then I know there'll be a time this spring when uh. Or in the summer, when Walleye's Unlimited usually come in and do efficient things, you know, they give kids all fishing poles and all kinds of stuff, so it's a great thing, and. Uh, just like to see it's uh improved and used more, and so it's good for the town, it really is. So if you guys would allow me to put in for that grant, I'd appreciate it.
Thanks, motion.
Uh, I think motion, oh, yeah, sorry.
Gina's done this. Next, I made a motion, we allowed Jean Towson to apply for the A A R P Community Challenge Grant.
Started?
For the Headwater Trail System.
Excuse me, second.
Motion has been made. And uh, is there any more discussion on this? I would, I'd just like to thank Jean for always doing out there. I remember when it was a big dirt pile, where I took my motorcycle out there with my grand, with my kids, so.
No, Randy, I'm old enough, I can remember it was the place to park when we were.
It wasn't that long, it wasn't that long ago.
I mean, the town ended at Fifth Avenue, and uh.
That was a good place, I remember when we uh fired department shop fireworks out of the middle. Yeah, so, okay, so uh, then it's been, the motion has been made, we'll have the vote, Roxy?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Jean?
Alstine.
Garrett?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
She's been back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Okay, uh. Item twelve, public comments or concerns, or items not on the agenda?
We have a comment.
Okay.
I was thinking with all the snow we've been getting, that. I remember way back, a long time ago, they would put out a thing, ask people that lived on a corner near fire hydrants to dig them up.
I have done that.
Huh?
I have posted that.
Oh, I haven't seen that, probably on the webpage, right?
It's on our Facebook page.
Okay, I haven't.
People aren't doing it.
I know it's not being done. Oh, okay.
Are there hydrants that are covered up?
Yes.
Yeah, you can see, you can see the top, but they're not completely accessible, or like the.
If you had to use them in a hurry, that would be a problem, I didn't even get to talk to Public Works and go dig it up a little bit.
Yeah, that'd be a good.
Yeah.
Project like Tyler's house, their pile is about that far, but you have no pile. You have one side, you're up to see it.
No, I'll get with Public Works and say that the product, we should make sure that they're clear. Thank you, Barry, that's good. Anything else?
Nope.
Well, Kate. Uh, mayor and council announcements, I do not have any. Night, how about the council and your announcements? Okay. And then uh. That'll end our meeting, we'll have another meeting like two weeks, uh, March eleventh, and uh, we'll have the more than we return. I'm still moving. There's been movement seconded, this second adjourned.
So Garrett, I would love to get your.
Your permit at the end of the year.